Good evening. Good evening and welcome to the June 18th, 2014 Board of Education meeting. We've been in executive session since 5:30 this evening discussing personnel matters. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think we have any pig students here, do we? If you are, you probably don't want to raise your hand because you're late getting your assignment in, but if there are any, we have sign up sheets here at the end to sign out. Introductions?
Lynn Lindhart.
Joanne Cunningham.
Kate Navarre.
Jody Monroe.
Tom Douglas.
Matt Downey.
Michael Cooper.
Diane Stever.
Charmaine Weedesinger.
And Judy Keough.
Next is the approval of the minutes of the June 4th, 2014 Regular Board Meeting.
So.
Second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Next, do we have a Student Senate representative this evening for us? Okay. Going on next is the Superintendent's Report. Before we begin that, I'd like to just say that tonight we'll be recognizing the women's softball team for their great job that they did, so congratulations to them. And also our retirees. They have given numerous, numerous hundreds of years of service when you combine all the years of our retirees, and so the Board would like to honor and recognize them for their dedicated service.
Can we do that now?
I think they wanted to do the softball first and then the retirees to culminate it.
We're going to get right there. I just have two very special announcements that just occurred this week. One of our high school students received the Capital Region BOSI's Faculty Association Student of the Year Award from the BOSI's Faculty Association President Doug Harple at the Albany Career and Technical School Award Ceremony on June 11th. Bethlehem's own Mackenzie Jerome has been named the Capital Region's BOSI's Faculty Association Student of the Year at the Capital Region Center's Career and Technical School. Ms. Jerome is a Certified Nursing Assistant Student at CTE. She interviewed with a panel of judges from component school districts and was chosen from a competitive field of students from throughout the Capital Region to be named the school's most outstanding student. So we want to congratulate Mackenzie, and I know with Mr. Mack... We had some short notice, so we're going to try to find a time to invite Mackenzie, but with summer vacation, I can understand some of the schedule that may be difficult to arrange with our board meetings. So, in addition, also some very good news from Bethlehem Central High School. Our mastermind team is again the New York State Champion for a second year in a row. On Saturday, June 14th, the regional winners from all over New York State competed at Lemoine College in Syracuse, and our Bethlehem team was undefeated in the tournament and throughout the entire year. Team members include Captain Jonah Goldberg, Max Rosenberg, Tom Sheridan, Ben Weinstein, Eric Wolfberg, and Sachi Kanwar. Each of these students have made a longstanding dedication to the program, and also a special point, Ben Weinstein was named Tournament MVP, and Eric Wolfberg was also named to the all-around tournament team. So we want to congratulate those students for their outstanding efforts. In addition to the academic achievements that we're seeing here at Bethlehem Central School District, we also want to recognize, as we do three times a year, our outstanding athletic teams and athletic individuals who have competed at the regional, state, or sectional championship level. And tonight, I would like to invite our Athletic Director, Mr. Len Keys, to do those presentations to the Board, and if I can have Mr. Downey as well as Mr. Cooper over by the flag will receive the students as well.
Thank you, and good evening, everybody. We have a lot of great athletes to honor this evening. Thank you, Mr. Nealon. As Dr. Douglas mentioned, it's been an outstanding spring, not only for our double A sectional championship softball team, but we also have several other outstanding athletes and some Scholar Athlete Teams to mention and honor tonight. So we'll hold our softball team to the end. They have the greatest numbers, and I'm going to ask some special student athletes to join me up here. First, congratulations to the following Bethlehem Spring Sports Programs on being recognized as New York State Public High School Athletic Association Scholar Athlete Teams. These are teams that carry a 90 or greater academic average during their season, and those teams earning the designation include our boys' lacrosse team, our girls' lacrosse team, our boys' track and field team, our girls' track and field team, and our boys' tennis team. So truly outstanding job. Again, you know, I want to thank these special student athletes this evening for their dedication, their hard work, their sacrifice. I want to thank their parents for being just the best fans, the biggest advocates for their athletes, for their children, and thank, of course, our administration, our community, and our Board for all the support. I'd like to recognize first Grace Smith, who was named New York State Public High School Athletic Association and State Federation Champion in the high jump. She broke the record for the school as well at five foot seven inches. So Grace, if you're here tonight?
Cool.
Okay, we'll hold that for Grace. Also, I'd like to mention that the County Executive, Dan McCoy, wanted to be here this evening and could not. However, he did send proclamations for each of the athletes, so we'll be distributing those as well. Noah Bell. Noah here. Noah finished second in the section in steeplechase, as well as being a member of the four-by-eight relay team, which also finished second. At states, he placed seventh in the steeplechase and broke his own personal record, and recently we recognized Noah as one of our college late-period signees. He'll be attending the University of Vermont and will be continuing his academic and athletic career there. So round of applause for Noah. Steven Booker. I know Steven's here. Come on up, Steve. Lots of great things to say about Steven. Steven placed second in both the 1600 and the 3200 meter. That was run the same day. Running three miles in one sectional championship day in and of itself is an incredible accomplishment. Finishing second in one of the most competitive sectionals in the state is truly a remarkable feat. Steven finished 10th in the state in the 3200 meter. He also broke the school record in the 1600 meter with a time of nine minutes and 12 seconds. And just this past Monday night, Steven was honored as Bethlehem Central's Male Suburban Council Leadership Award winner, where we had an awards reception at the Hilton Garden. So an outstanding year for Steven. I'd like to bring up Matt Mastriani. Matt placed in the top eight in the entire section. Come on up, Matt. And earned an invitation to the state championships in golf. He performed at Cornell at the Trent Jones Course, did a great job representing Bethlehem Central, and goes down as one of the best golfers here that we've had in a real long time. So Matt Mastriani, great job. We're waiting on one of our, another one of our track and field athletes who's going to be joining us. Oh, he's here. He's made it. Brian Greenberg. I'd like to have Brian to come join us. Brian is the Section Two Champion in long jump, second place in sectionals in the triple jump, placed third in the states in the triple jump with a jump of 47 feet three inches. That's three steps, 12th best in section history. Incredible job by Brian, and he had a tremendous track and field career. Brian Greenberg. And now I'd like to acknowledge the tremendous run by our softball team. Team had a very successful regular season and really turned it up a notch at the end of the season before they went into the playoffs. Really faced a gauntlet through there, starting off with Gilderlin, defeating Gilderlin in the quarterfinals, Shenandoah in the semifinals, and Columbia in the sectional finals, all tremendously competitive, exciting games, losing a heartbreaker in the regional finals to Liverpool, but an outstanding effort and really, really proud of our girls and our coaching staff, just a tremendous effort. So with that, I'll be asking each of the young ladies to come on up, and after you meet with me to get your county executive certificate, go on over to Dr. Douglas and company. Brooke Corbett.
Emmett Downey. Sarah Hamzey. Stephanie Connors. Carrie Minichia. Addison Myers. Kayla O'Callaghan. KK Pomarino. Rachel Piccolino. Haley Freckle. Caitlin Rariff. And Megan Sullivan.
I just want to say once again, you know, how proud of these student athletes. Not only are they outstanding on the field, but in the classroom, they're really leaders in the community, they're idols to our sub varsity teams, and really do a wonderful job representing our school and our community throughout the playoffs, throughout the state championships and sectionals. I'm lucky enough to be at many of these tournaments, and our kids always get complimented about the performance of the athletes as well. But that, I don't want to reiterate that, but like, you have guys, Karen Jenzyle, Sean Schreiner, Tom Howley, the big village coaches, varsity coaches, for each of these programs, even if it involves, without them and their instruction and their leadership, the success also is not enough. So just around the corner, everybody.
Now the shyest two were in the back row in the left, so Coach Linehan.
Colleen, you must be doing that a lot. They were already polled.
And now, ladies and gentlemen, what we would also like to do is education, whether you're in any part of our system, is an important dynamic that each individual brings to the table from the start of the year to the end of the year. And it is always difficult because you don't want to let anyone go that does such wonderful jobs for our students, our community, that we also want to honor our retirees for this past school year. So at this time, I will turn it over to, I believe, Mrs. Johnston, as well as Ms. Monroe and Ms. Keough, as we present our retirees for the 2014 school year. And I think the Board, we're going to go right up in the middle here.
Retiree that we'd like to honor tonight is Robert Oravsky, affectionately known as Bobby O., so come on down. Bob has been an outstanding person in our Transportation Department, a very professional school bus driver. It's clear that he cares very deeply about his students and the department. He's known to always bring a smile to the colleagues' faces by sharing a joke or a funny story. I've heard a few of those tonight as well. We won't share them here, but they were good. Bobby has displayed outstanding team player characteristics. He's always helped his supervisors find solutions to the various issues at hand, whether it was about how to better manage students on the bus or changing the routes. Bob has always been helpful and willing to roll up his sleeves for the various department meetings that have been held, and even after retirement, he has been reported from time to time visiting transportation and catching up with friends. So we hope that you enjoy your retirement years with your first wife and your three grandsons. Sam Robinson, 33 years in transportation. Hi, Sam retired a few months ago, and I got to say, I miss hearing your voice when I call down there. Sam has been one of the pillars of the Transportation Department. They've always counted on him to help them meet their mission. You have been loved by all who have worked with you. You've always received a lot of praise from the parents of the students that you've served and from your colleagues. In 2001, you were the Transportation Department Employee of the Year, and those are not easy to come by. As a Certified 19A DMV School Bus Examiner, a State Ed School Bus Driver Instructor, you've left a huge imprint on all of the employees in the department that you have worked with. And you have been known to be an incredibly caring person, to help everybody just do the best possible job. Your last duty in your final years at the department was as a dispatcher, and your knowledge of all things transportation and your experiences spanning close to 34 years has been invaluable in helping the department be a success. Your easygoing personality, genuine caring for all of those around you, I only have two more pages, Sam, don't worry, okay? And the love for your profession is seldom repeated. You are a true gentleman, an outstanding friend and colleague, and you have been depended on for your wisdom. You've always been helping out on committees within the department, and your advice has been characterized as sage, which I believe, and it has always been heeded by those in transportation. So you've left a big void, but we do hope you keep coming back to transportation, and we wish you and your family all the best in your retirement years. And Lad Valentini. Are you afraid yet, last but not least? Lad is also known as a consummate professional in the Transportation Department, also a Certified 19A DMV School Bus Examiner, SED School Bus Driver Instructor, which we note he obtained on his own time, using his own funds, has been for years a significant contributor to the overall enhancement of the Transportation Department's safety record. You asked and readily accepted the co-leadership reins of the BEAT team, Buster the Bus, everybody, you know, we've had him come before our Board meetings before. You almost single-handedly brought what was a good school bus safety program geared specifically to K through five students, and you made it into a premier program recognized throughout New York State. You worked tirelessly on that and many times volunteered your time to make sure that this program was second to none in terms of its content, delivery, and effectiveness. Lad, by any measure, has been a leader. You have displayed this leadership by contributing your expertise as an active participant on the district's process committee, as well as in other areas for the department. You have always been counted on to offer positive suggestions on how to improve the operation of the department, better training, accident and incident review, and the hiring process for new drivers. So you have indeed left an indelible mark on the department, and we will miss you and Marilyn tremendously.
I'd like to ask Art Leder to come up. For the past 28 years, Art Leder has served as a world-class speech pathologist at Bethlehem Central School District. He's provided life-changing guidance for over 1,000 students. But he has done so much more than that. Over the years, at the request of supervisors and administrators, Mr. Leder has mentored aspiring speech pathologists, served as an interim elementary principal at three buildings, and has served as a CSC Chairperson, which is actually when I got to know Mr. Leder. Art began the Lip Sync Program that has become quite popular throughout our elementary programs, and has provided guidance and leadership to countless colleagues and parents. We will truly miss Mr. Leder's friendship, support, professionalism, his humor, and unassuming ways. We are so grateful for all of the positive contributions you've made to Elsmere and to BC in general. We wish you the best of luck, and I certainly am almost jealous of the journeys you have ahead of you with your beautiful wife and family. So congratulations, all. Now I'd like to invite Pam Stewart up. As Mrs. Stewart completes her final years of teaching, she celebrates 31 years in education. Prior to coming to Bethlehem, Pam taught in Newark, New York, was a speech therapist in Berlin, and taught for two years at Village Preschool in West Sand Lake, which, again, I feel like I'm so old tonight when I realize how long ago I met you guys, but that's when we go back, a long time ago. Pam has made significant contributions to the Special Education Program here at Bethlehem. When we hired Pam in 1988, she was the first teacher to teach in a district-run self-contained program. That goes back a long way, and that was at Clarksville Elementary School. Then in 1995, the program was moved to Elsmere Elementary School. Then in 1997, in anticipation of the opening of the Early Learning Center, Pam was moved back to Slingerlands. So again, like many of us, kind of doing the rotation of our elementary buildings. Here, she was part of the team that developed and implemented the first co-taught classrooms that we had at Bethlehem. Over the years, the programs grew, and many students found success with this new type of structure. It's amazing, as you look back, our special education programs have come so far. We have Pam to thank for all of her talent, hard work, and dedication. All of the kindergartners have returned now to their home schools, and as that happened, Pam moved on to teach a variety of resource room programs and co-taught programs, and as we looked, we believe that was in second grade, third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade. So you've pretty much run the gamut. Pam is such a fabulous teacher. She does whatever it takes to help a child be successful. The teachers love working with her in the co-taught programs. She gives 150% every day. Pam is a wonderful advocate for young children, and especially those with special needs. She is a warm and nurturing person with the children and to the parents. Her relationships with families are always strong and have lasted for years. Several years ago, one of Pam's students nominated her for the Sensational Staff Award, which of course she won. Pam's work with young children, and especially children with special needs, has been extraordinary. Her time, energy, and talent is to be commended, and we greatly appreciate your work. As Pam looks ahead to retirement, she has a wedding to plan with her son, and will be doing a lot of traveling and subbing for us. So we thank you for that. Congratulations.
I'd ask if Ms. Teri Goldrich can come up. Teri Goldrich can best be described as a consummate professional and tireless advocate for the English Department at the Bethlehem Central High School. Teri taught full-time in Bethlehem for 28 years. She truly enjoyed teaching and guiding the students in her class to be better writers, critical readers, and thinkers, and lifelong lovers of literature. She worked at enhancing the curriculum, in particularly expanding on the contemporary literature and enriched English courses she taught over the years. She's worked closely with students of all ability levels to make sure they had an opportunity to develop the literacy skills she taught every day. Her expectations were high, but she believed all students could reach them through hard work and positive interactions with others. Teri will long be remembered for her creativity in the classroom, enthusiasm for the content, and compassion for her students, not just as learners of English, but as young people growing and developing their minds and hearts every day. We here in the English Department of the Bethlehem Central School District feel very fortunate to have met and worked with a person of the highest knowledge, professionalism, and competence, is Teri Goldrich. Congratulations and best of luck in your retirement. And next, Ms. Marilyn Valentini. The Slingerland School motto, "Always our best," must have been written with Marilyn in mind. She always asked the best from the children, and in turn, she gave her very best every day for the past 41 years. Marilyn has been an integral part of Bethlehem's school and community for many, many years. Over these years, her contributions, both in the class and with the school and district, are commendable and greatly appreciated. Marilyn began her teaching career in Ipswich, Massachusetts, where she taught fifth graders for seven years. She then moved to Pennsylvania in 1980, where she taught remedial reading for several years. Marilyn was hired in Bethlehem in 1984, where she taught remedial reading, fourth grade, second grade, fifth grade, three to four multi-age classes, and finally, first grade. Marilyn was incredibly devoted to her children and provided them with everything they needed to be successful. Marilyn was incredibly devoted to her children and provided them with everything they needed to be successful in school and in life. Anyone who ever walked into her room could instantly see how much she loved the children and how much they loved her back. She has a special talent for making everyone feel like they were the most important child in the room. She made her smart cookies do their best every day. Over the years, Marilyn contributed to the school and community in so many ways. She was part of developing and implementing the Peaceable Bus Program at Clarksville. In addition, Marilyn served on the Social Studies Cabinet, the Social Committee, Homework Club, Teacher Mentor, and she taught after-school tap and jazz classes to fourth and fifth graders. Marilyn was also honors in Who's Who among America's teachers three times. Wow. We will miss Marilyn's sense of humor, great stories, positive attitude, honesty, willingness to take on whatever was coming next, but most of all, her love for the kiddos, and her passion for teaching, learning, and life. Marilyn has big plans for retirement. She can't wait to come back to Slingerlands to volunteer in the classroom. She hopes to take up dancing again, maybe even teaching some jazz. Marilyn and Lad have already started traveling, starting their trip this spring to tour the southern states. A huge thanks to Marilyn for her dedication, time, talent, and love of teaching. We will miss you. And I had to save Darlene Douse for last, because some of you may not know this, but she usually coordinates this retirement reception, and this year still did. And when she sent out the reminder to get everyone's written work in, I simply told her that she was not getting mine until tonight. So she has not seen this, and she was, I think she's a little panicked sitting there, actually. So come on up, Darlene. I promised I would be nice. Her husband and children and grandchildren are here. Darlene Douse has worked for the Bethlehem Central School District for 27 years. She began her career as a teacher aide at Slingerlands Elementary School, transitioned to part-time clerical positions between Hammagill and Slingerlands, and in 1998, she assumed a full-time clerical position at Hammagill before she decided to move to the central office in the district in July of 2001. Since 2001, Darlene has held many different positions, eventually assuming the role of Secretary to the Assistant Superintendent for Educational Programs. Darlene has worked closely with faculty and administration in many facets. She always has a smile on her face, reminds me when I don't, goes out of her way to assist everyone. She has been instrumental in ensuring all of our programs run smoothly. She also had the challenge of keeping three different assistant superintendents on track, which I can assure you is no small task. Our office will not be the same without her. In fact, I keep telling her she can come back and we'll find things for her to do. Darlene's absence will certainly be felt in the district. However, she's looking forward to spending time with family, especially all of her grandchildren, new ones, and enjoying a more relaxed pace of life. I'm sure, however, that she will miss PDP greatly. Come on. And I know that I'm going to greatly miss her presence and her reminders. When I don't have a smile on my face, they're make a comment, she'll say, "Don't Jody." Many best wishes for many wonderful years ahead, Darlene. See, I was nice, and she's still teary-eyed. And how about a final round of applause for all of our retirees?
In addition, some of our retirees could not make this evening, and we would be remiss if we did also recognize their contributions to the school district. And one that I'm particularly fond of, that left just at the beginning of the year, last July, was my secretary, who served the district for 11 school years and also served three superintendents. So I know Cindy Bradley is really felt as a presence in our office, as well as her being in North Carolina, and we wish her the best with her grandchildren as well, and we know that she visits from time to time. But also, Ms. Nancy Brennan, a teacher aide for seven years. Christine Case, school monitor for 14 years. Kathy Hasselbach from Slingerlands for 18 years. Martin Malucci for custodian for 28 years. Terrence O'Hare from Transportation for 13 years. Gary Powers, one of our custodians, for 42 years. Joseph Ryan from Operation of Maintenance for 15 years. Edward Winegarden from Transportation for 13 years. And last but not least, Janet Tripp from Special Education for 22 years. We wish everyone the best in their retirements. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Douglas. And again, congratulations to all the retirees, and thank you for your years and years of service. Truly appreciate that. And one thing about Mrs. Valentini that they didn't mention is the children really miss the prize drawer. She had a prize drawer, and I speak from experience, both my children were fortunate to have Mrs. Valentini for second grade, and she had a prize drawer, and the kids always worked so hard to be able to get a prize from that drawer. And they did what they needed to do to get it. So again, thank you, everybody. Appreciate that. Next up is the Board of Education report. I'd like to start by saying, we don't have a retiree with us tonight, but we have a board member who is her official last board meeting with us, Dr. Kate Navarro. She decided not to rerun for election, and she is now going to have her Wednesday nights free. So anybody ever looking for anything to do on a Wednesday night with Kate, give her a call, because she's going to have a lot of free time on Wednesday nights. But personally, Kate has been an asset to me in terms of giving me guidance and suggestions, especially this past year as my role as board president. She is one who is very passionate about the students and about education, and we're very fortunate as a district and as a board to have had her for the past three years. So I'd like to thank Dr. Navarro for her service. I'm not sure if you, this is all very impromptu, so I don't know if she'd like to say anything or not.
Well, you're being very nice.
I'm being very honest.
Very nice way, because I can be a pain in the butt, but I will speak my mind, and I do appreciate having to meet everyone and getting a chance to know people and getting to know a lot of the staff, which has been wonderful, and I have great respect for what you do, definitely. Christine will fill my place and do great, I am sure, in that, and Brittany won't have to send me extra notes because I don't check my emails. Let me know when there's meetings, so it'll probably be a little bit easier on you. But I am very passionate about education, and this is just not the right time for me to continue this, but I'll be back at some point, I am sure. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you again. Anyone else want to add anything?
I mean, I do have something to mention.
I always look at you, Lynn, because you always have something to say, which is always good. I mean, you're so involved and so active in so many different groups that you always provide, you know, feedback to us, so.
Well, this was interesting, actually. Yesterday, it was called a mixed summit, municipal innovation exchange, looking at the possibilities of, as that tax freeze comes into effect, ways of saving money with towns, counties, villages, and, well, and obviously, school boards, you know, for groups of elected officials, because we all are elected officials. And so yesterday's summit was held at Hudson Valley Community College, and I ended up on a panel with all politicians. So I clarified that I am not a politician. But anyhow, but there was interesting, people explained things that were going on, showing some sharing, that there's been a lot of sharing going on over the years, and people just don't know about it because sometimes it might have been done by a handshake. You don't always have everything documented. So, you know, so there's promise for things that can be done, but a lot of it depends on maybe changing some laws, mending the Constitution, things like that, that, you know, would help all the entities save money by working together. So I have another one down tomorrow on Long Island, so it'll be interesting to hear perspectives from down there, too.
Yes, John. Nine is it tomorrow? Is it early morning or afternoon?
Well, it starts at nine, so I'd leave by four in the morning to wash hour, because it's easier to drive than for the train to there.
Yes, John.
I just want to say a couple of things. One is just to Kate, we will miss you. I personally will miss you. One of the things that I think has been a great value add with respect to your contributions to this board is your willingness to say things when, that many people might be thinking, and they may be a little sensitive or potentially contentious, and yet you are an honest enough participant, that you're just willing to put it out there, and I have enormous respect for you because of your willingness to do that. And I also think it makes this board better. And sometimes you spark, most times, your comments will spark a very important conversation that then takes place that had not, you had made your statement or presented your argument or made whatever connection you made, you know, we might not have had that conversation that was very important. So I applaud you. I respect you enormously. I wish you well, and I hope you do come back at some point because you are enormously valuable to this board and to this district. Just a couple of other things. One is, I went to the Spectrum concert here at the high school two weeks ago, and what's very funny is, we had the conversation here at the board table about the concert that was taking place the next day, which somehow was not on my family calendar, and when I drove up to my house at 6:45, the only reason I knew I was supposed to be there was my son was waving his white shirt, telling me he needed it ironed. And I have to say, I was not prepared for being bowled over by this unbelievable concert that if we had charged admission for this thing, I mean, it was incredible. I would just want to say publicly that, and I wish I had all of their names, but the music department at the high school that put that on, just incredible commitment and organization to pull that thing together. Just absolutely incredible. When I was sharing that with my friends who had been to that concert prior, they said, "Oh yeah, this is the event of the year." And from what I understand in speaking with some of the music department officials, they have said, "You know what? This makes Bethlehem special. There is no parallel to this in other districts." So a wonderful tribute to, again, what makes our district top-notch and is worth noting, but just want to compliment all the musicians, obviously, but the unbelievable leadership that it takes from the music department and the high school faculty and the administration and your leadership to pull that together. So just incredible. I mean, I'm still awed by it. And just a final comment, just want to speak briefly, and we're going to talk about one of these items shortly, but the national news is really focused on the issue of testing, of food, of not just Common Core, but really some big policy discussions that are taking place in the national narrative. It's very, very interesting. It's hard to sometimes sort of get to the bottom of, you know, sometimes what is a short article in a national newspaper that doesn't really dig deep. But I'm glad that we are going to be talking about testing, you know, just the, and from my own understanding, really understanding really what the testing looks like in a school district like Bethlehem, you know, what that means, what the ripple effects are. Much of it is linked to the Common Core standards. Much of it, you know, is a layer in and of itself. But really hot, hot topics, as well as, you know, the food service updates coming up. But food in schools is also a huge political issue being discussed on the national stage, not just because our First Lady is talking about it, but also, you know, there's a lot of lawmakers in Washington now focused on food and nutrition and so forth. So I look forward to those conversations. I think they're great and very appropriate board discussions to have, and I hope we can really examine them thoughtfully, I guess, is what I would hope. But thank you.
Spectrum was great. I won't, Joan did such a wonderful job describing it and congratulating people, but it was a fabulous event. I particularly appreciate how quickly the event moves along. It just flies right through, and it's always great, given the crowd, and it was fabulous. So the other thing is, I attended the science research symposium run by Ms. Gagne and her students, the scientific research class, my son's in it. But students had to present PowerPoints on their research and their projects. They did a fabulous job. I just want to commend Ms. Gagne for preparing another generation of young scientists to do research, and also prepares me to be one of the Board of Examinants for the Lab School, very similar kind of program next week. So I just want to appreciate that. And then a parent spoke to me this week about something she, her students saw, her children saw on a tape on one of the board meetings, which astounded me that people do actually watch the tapes, and she said, "I make my kids watch the tapes of the board meeting. I think it's important." And it was the meeting where we were discussing Chinese. And she said, "My students take Spanish and French, and they were watching and end of a meeting," and she said, "They were stunned." And she said, "I so much appreciated when board members said something." Because she said, "At that, up to that point, my students weren't, my children weren't feeling valued." So I just want to kind of reiterate what John was saying both about Kate, but for all of us, is when things can be left and could be either confusing to students or ambiguous, or if read the wrong way, be very offensive to students, it's our responsibility, I would encourage us, to say something. That's how I raise my kids. We don't have to debate with people, but if it's left hanging or left ambiguous, someone is watching, and someone could be saying, "They're talking about me, and I'm not feeling valued." So I will say that.
Great. Thank you, Charmaine.
On a lighter note, I went to the Poetry Cafe today in third grade, which is, if you look at it from the outside, it's pretty awesome, actually, and I think they should do it. Every kid got up, gave their two poems. One was about what they were, or about their dad, or about poetry. And they all had to stand up in front of all the parents and the other classmates and read their poems, which, they get over the fear of poetry, which is daunting in and of itself. So now they're not afraid of poetry at all, because they think they know how to do it, which is great. They do public speaking, which is fabulous, and I think should be done more, honestly, in school, and they just really enjoy it. And every single kid did really well. It was amazing. It was amazing. And it was above my expectations. And I've been to them before, and there's been kids who really, really stumbled and kids who really, you could almost tell were in plays and things, and they really spoke well. But this whole group did really, really well. And I think the teachers at, the third grade teachers at Eagle, I think, are fabulous in general. That's who I know. And they really did a great job today. Really did.
Thank you. And one other thing I want the board to be aware of. Last Friday, we did, had to sign some paperwork for a ban for the, bond anticipation note for the construction. It was sixteen million, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We signed that. The note bears actually a 1% interest rate, and we actually, the person who agreed to buy the bond actually paid a premium for it. So it's like 0.05% that we're paying on this bond for the one year. So a great, great rate. And the deal went through today. We were notified, too.
We have the money. It has arrived. Do we still use fiscal advisors?
Capital markets.
Oh, capital market, yeah.
Yeah, we put that out to RFP.
I just, I just remember.
Okay. All right. At this time, the board would, would recognize any visitor who has anything to say about an agenda item. Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped over the presentations. We'll do the presentations first. I'm sorry about that. I'm sorry, I skipped that. Food service update. Judy?
Good evening, everybody. Tonight I wanted to give you your quick update on the food service program. Use the mic, Charmaine. You're not hearing me? Okay, how's that? We last gave our update in December, and a lot has happened since then. We have had an interim director in place since April 1st. That is Mano De Jardine. And I have to give her a huge thank you tonight because she has done a fabulous job holding that department together. I've been working closely with her, trying to make sure that we get quality meals out to the students every day. She's had the help of her staff. Kevin Mosher, in particular, has helped her with her ordering and with the inventory management. And all of the staff, particularly at the high school, have been supportive of her and have really pulled together. So I've been just so proud of the work that they've done while we have been in this time of transition. Later on, on the agenda tonight, we will have some breaking news. We are towards the very tail end of our search process. So we'll have an announcement on that later on on the agenda, but it's, it's great news. I wanted to give you a quick overview as we were projecting our results for this current fiscal year. Initially, we were projecting a loss of potentially seventy-five thousand dollars or so. We've done stronger on our revenues than we had even expected. This slide gives you some of the details so you can comparatively see. While we knew we were going to have a decline in our lunch and breakfast numbers with the exit from the federal program, those revenue lines represent our reimbursable meal sales. We've increased or offset that decrease by sales in the à la carte and the snack bar and with the coffee shop. As you had heard at our last update, we were trying to introduce a number of different types of sales opportunities for students and staff where we were making food available after school. That started in February, and that was pretty well received. I think the word quickly spread that the students could get paninis and other snacks to tide them over over the few hours that they were often here after school working on their various extracurricular activities or sports programs. So that has really done well. And the coffee shop numbers have taken off. We've had early hours. We've had the introduction of some bagels, bagel sandwiches, and things of that nature. That increase has almost doubled in the past year, and a large portion of that was because of those types of hot breakfast offerings that were part of the coffee shop. We continue to have the sales of hot chocolate be popular. The smoothie sales were a big piece of that as well. And iced tea, some coffee sales. But the procedures that we put in place where parents could restrict their accounts for their students seem to offer the peace of mind that some parents were looking for with that. The federal and state revenues and the surplus has gone down somewhat, and that is a reflection of our exit from the federal program at the high school level only. Just last week, I had gone to the Association of School Business Officials Conference and had presented with two other school districts who had completely exited from the meal program. And Bethlehem was unique in that the board chose to stay with the program in K through eight. And it was interesting to me that some of the other schools noted that they were thinking about coming back into the program because, as Joanne had noted, there is this growing realization that healthy food, high-quality food does matter. And it'll be interesting to see whether they ultimately come back. And if we, as we go forward in the program, see that those efforts start to really yield results with changing eating habits of our students. The last line, the thirteen thousand, I did want to point out that FERPLE stands for the Free and Reduced Price Lunches, as we had talked about. Even though we're out of that at the high school level, any families who continue to be eligible for that does have the cost of those meals subsidized by the general fund. So that thirteen thousand is the projected amount that was transferred in. And that was pretty close to the estimates that we had when we had exited. So we're looking at about 1.1 million dollars in revenues through June 30th, 2014. On the expenditure side, we put the brakes on a lot of the expenditures so that we could really try to close the gap. Our salaries, we really were virtually flat with last year's numbers. Part of that is from the interim or the lack of a director over the last few months of the year. But that did help us close the gap on the current year. The equipment line is a one-time expenditure. We have about fifteen thousand dollars in the point-of-sale equipment that we needed to purchase this year. The tech office has been getting a run for their money trying to keep those equipment point-of-sale units going. They were crashing and burning left and right. So we did recommend that that be purchased this year. Note the dramatic decline in the food products. And I think that speaks to the staff's ability to use what we had on hand and to really go minimalistic on what they were ordering, just what they needed. That has really helped control those costs. Miscellaneous are just uniforms and other program supplies. You can see about a thirty thousand dollar reduction in expenditures at 1.2 million dollars.
Judy, back to the equipment, does, does that expenditure include anything with the inventory control that we talked about?
No, this is just the point-of-sale units. Sal has been working with us to get quotes and explore the various features of that. And we'll be reviewing those features also with the incoming food service director so that we can make sure that it's got the full functionality based on their expertise. And we'll be able to launch that soon.
It should be tied into the point-of-sale, too.
Oh, yes. It's all integrated. The way it's sold is in different modules that you can add on and integrate to the software. So we are looking at that, but that is not included in the thirteen, fourteen numbers. That'll be fourteen, fifteen.
If I may, one of, one of the holdups on that is plus, we do want to start the year off with a low inventory that we've been exiting out of and then enter into an inventory control program. But one of the items that Sal's been having some difficulty with. Oh, are we all set now? Yeah, we were, we were trying to find the best vantage point through a BOSI service because with the tax freeze and everything, instead of going out and doing it just ourselves, we were exploring those options, and it just took a little bit. So I think we're at a better position.
Again, because that was a audit item.
Yep.
Including the fifteen thousand and change for those point-of-sale units, we're looking at a net loss of sixty-three thousand dollars, which is below the seventy-five thousand that we had projected earlier on in the year. If you peel back that equipment, you're looking at just under a fifty thousand dollar loss for the operating budget. And I think that's terrific progress over the course of one year. So I'm really pleased with those results, and I think we're really starting to see people coming back into the program. And the word is spreading. And hopefully, with a new director on board, we'll just continue to build on that momentum. And I would love to report a break-even or even a slight profit in next year's program results. And we are recommending this evening that the board authorize a transfer of up to sixty thousand dollars from the general fund into the school lunch fund so that we can make sure that we're pretty much staying break-even with the resources for that fund. And then that will allow us to start the new year off with a clean slate with the financial operations for food service. Meal prices. We've talked about this on and off over the last year and a half or so. Our last increase was back in 2010, '11, where we raised both the elementary and middle school prices by a dollar, up to 3.25 and three dollars. Milk prices have been at 50 cents for a long time. What we are suggesting the board to consider for 2014, '15 is to just increase those meal prices by 25 cents, up to 3.50 for the middle school and 3.25 for the elementary lunches. Milk prices up to 60 cents is also, I think, warranted, given the length of time and the cost of milk that we have. Assuming we don't have any impacts on the number of meals sold, we could expect to see close to thirty thousand dollars from those pricing changes. So I think it's wise to go in that direction, at least as we go into the year. And we can certainly monitor how the meal sales are doing. We can take feedback from our families. And if it proves to be too much, we can always come back and revisit that at the board level during the year. Wanted to give you some history on the meal counts since 2009, '10 through projected numbers for 2013, '14. Back when their meal prices were at the two dollar and two and a quarter level, you can see that between all three buildings, we had about 276,000 meals sold. When we had the price increase, we had a fairly dramatic reduction. I think the dollar at the time, even though it was, it's still a terrific value for the food that was being provided when you have multiple kids, I think the parents spoke and said, you know, we need to, to roll back on what we can afford to purchase. And that was reflected in those totals. The numbers were fairly steady going into '11, '12. And then when the MyPlate regulations kicked in in '12, '13, we saw even more of a reduction. And I think that was part of that initial transition where we had talked to the community about the perception that they might be getting less food, even though it was healthier foods and ample servings of the fruit and the vegetables. It did cause a reduction in our meals sold. And again, particularly at the high school level, which was what prompted that decision to exit the program in the 2013, '14 school year. As expected, the meal counts are lower, and that is because of the high school dropping down. And, and again, I think we have room to grow. We had talked about that in the last presentation. We're ranging between 30 to 35% participation at the elementary and the middle schools. And I think with a surge of energy and vitality into the program, I'm hoping that we can turn that around and see those numbers increase. And we did list the number of meals sold at the high school. Those are not reimbursable meals, but those are the equivalent of a meal, other than the, the portions are slightly larger than what you would be getting through the MyPlate program.
And that, correct me if I'm wrong, that doesn't, the meals are actual meals served, full meals served, not all the à la carte?
Correct. That's just the meals. In addition to that, you had the salad bar, and then you had the pizza and pasta, and then the other.
So if someone wanted just a sandwich, that wouldn't be a meal.
Correct.
But that might be what they wanted.
Right. But if they were going and getting the, you know, the hot turkey where they had a vegetable and potatoes and then the turkey, that would count as a meal. So anything on that side of the, the line would be counting as a meal. We put together an estimated budget for 2014, '15 showing that increase in the pricing in the lunch and breakfast line, putting that up to about 466,000, and also anticipating growing participation in the program as, as word is spreading about what is being offered. Some increases in the student à la carte. Everything else pretty much staying the same. We did bump up the coffee shop numbers because while we started the year at about maybe 12,000 a month if we had a full month of school in session, towards the end of the school year, we were up to about 16,000 dollars a month. So based on that uptick in participation, we increased that revenue estimate as well. About the same on the surplus food items and miscellaneous. So that would put us to about 1.2 million dollars. And looking at the salaries, note the drop down in the equipment estimate, food products, and uptick based on hopefully buying additional fresh items and stuff that the students are interested in purchasing. Uptick in employee benefits as well. Hopefully, we'll come in lower than that. But that would get us to ideally a balanced budget. And we, of course, will continue to provide regular updates. I'm getting the information daily now in terms of how the, the sales are going. But we would give the periodic updates for the board as well next year. So our recommendation is let's keep doing what we're doing. We do seem to be moving in the right direction with our numbers. We are hoping to expand on catering options. We've had a lot of interest expressed to us from both faculty and administration, from parent groups who would love to have the convenience of having the district provide the food items for their various events. Len Keys has been very helpful in working with the coaches to spread the word on what we can do. So we had ideas that were identified as part of the Food Service Committee that was in effect this year, where we had a combination of parent volunteers and employees participating. So we have the ideas, and with leadership in that program, we're really hoping to see continued progress with that. Recommendation is to increase the lunch prices by 25 cents at the elementary and middle school levels, milk by 10 cents, and then to authorize that transfer not to exceed 60,000. And I think that will well position us going into the next year.
When you were in your presentation, you have the Ask Home thing. How are our prices compared, you know, for our program?
Our pricing compared to the other schools is towards the upper end of the range in the area. I think there has been some reluctance from some of the other schools to raise the prices. But again, with the 25 cent increase, I, I don't think that's unreasonable. I think we should try it and then, again, evaluate what those sales results are and perhaps tweak it later in the year if we need to.
I have a couple of questions. Just so I understand, just a clarification, under the revenues, so what exactly is surplus food? What, what, that's a revenue?
Government food.
It's, think of it as in-kind donations. It's food that is made available to school lunch programs. That, so often it's dairy type of products. It's your cheeses. You get a lot of your meats that come from that program. So it's stuff that keeps well, that transports well, and it is surplus at the federal government level and flows through to schools.
Okay.
Garbanzo beans, very popular item this past year.
Okay. I guess one of the things that would be helpful for me is to understand better what the, the, the only sort of breakdown you have by school type, elementary, middle, high, high school, are on the meal counts. But when we look at like the estimated revenues for next year, it's hard to understand what, you know, say lunch, breakfast, you know, what, what's driving, in, in other words, where are those sales coming from? Are they mostly? I know you have that data. I think I've seen.
Yeah, and that's part of the monthly reports that goes to the board when you're approving those financial reports. All those statistics are on there because we, too, want to look at that by building. That's total revenues by building. So it's not only the actual meals in the meal program. It's also all of the à la carte numbers. carte numbers as well.
Right, because obviously, like the snack bar, that's not, that's at every school? There's a snack bar category?
That's the high school snack bar. This, there are some other items sold at the K through eight level and those are all included as part of the student à la carte sales.
Okay. So, the ones up there that are high school only are obviously the coffee shop, the snack bar, and then the student à la carte, is that high school?
That includes high school, but the student à la carte is all levels, K through 12.
Okay. But I assume the, you know, what drives most of the revenue in that bucket is probably high school because it's more geared toward the à la carte options.
Yes. And when you're in the federal program, you have limitations on what à la carte items you can offer at the K, eight level. So, yes, it is predominantly high school.
Right, okay. So, I mean, I guess one of my concerns still, stills the same concern. And that is if you look at kind of what's, what our numbers look like and where, you know, we're doing well, well, the coffee shop. So, I would love to see a breakdown of what are those top selling items that drove, you know, this nice $111,000 landing spot in, in our revenue at the high school. Is it, you know, is it coffee, which, you know, I, I have a firm fundamental belief that a public high school should not sell coffee to students. And I wonder, you know, am I making a big deal about nothing because the coffee shop, that proportion of sales is so small that we're not talking a large number, although I would still reserve the right to make the philosophical argument. So, I'd love to see kind of the breakdown of some of that, you know. Is it egg sandwiches? Well, egg sandwiches, you know, that's probably not a bad thing to, to drive a good revenue uptick.
Our egg sandwiches were the second highest seller.
Okay, that's good.
Again, this is just through June 17th. We sold about $12,600 in egg sandwiches. The top seller, $16,500, were the bagels.
Okay. So, maybe rather than go through, I mean, I would love to see that, I'm sure the board would.
Why don't we put that in the update?
I would gladly.
Yeah, that'd be great.
It's just two pages, it's not like it's a voluminous report and then you can look at that. And then I'll update it for you once we get the final year end numbers.
That'd be great. And then the other question I have is the snack bar. Well, really, just a global question is, because I've seen some of the snack bar stuff, I think it's categorized as snack bar, which kind of is in that little separate area in the high school. And, you know, at my quick glance, it looked like a lot of junk, you know, that I, you know, I'm not sure is an appropriate, you know, kind of option. I also know because it was, and maybe this is just not accurate, but actually a teacher told me that that kind of snack bar stuff was all moved out into the corridor, moved into a more strategic location, maybe within the cafeteria or, or around the cafeteria to make it even more appealing to buy that stuff. So, you know, I guess I would just question, I understand we need to, we need to look at the finances, but I also think we have to look carefully about, you know, what kind of stuff is, is on the menu because kids will buy, you know, they will opt for things that are not sometimes healthy. And then my final, my final comment is, I guess on the meal prices, you know, I'm not sure why we're increasing prices for like the healthy option of milk when we could be increasing prices for something that's not such a healthy option. In other words, why would we add to the pricing of something, we're actually trying to encourage kids to drink because it's actually good for them versus something else? And maybe we don't have to raise the prices of the actual lunch that kids in elementary and middle school are relying on versus why don't we charge more for the bag of Doritos that we're selling at the snack bar, whatever we're selling? I mean, I don't remember what I saw, it was a quick glance, but, you know, it looked like there were some options there that were, you know. So, if we're looking at increasing pricing, you know, at a minimum, I don't think we should be increasing pricing for things that we're trying to encourage kids to go for, so.
On the à la carte items, we look at what is selling and we have much more flexibility on adjusting those prices. We can make adjustments mid-year even, we just post what the notices are on the change.
And we've actually done that this year.
Yes.
We're trying to be strategic about it to try to close the gap.
Right. No, and I'd like to see a listing. I, I saw kind of those purchase order things that, you know, there's a lot of stuff on there and I know when I looked at that, you know, the response was, well, that's just kind of the full array of what's available for purchase. I get that, but it'd be nice to see what we do actually put, you know, in front of our kids, including and especially really that snack bar, the coffee shop, you know, that kind of stuff.
And the snack bar did not move.
I was going to ask for clarification on that to make sure.
There's no moving.
Yeah, and like I said, it was one person and I didn't really, it was a while ago, but it was that there was some, something that was moved to be more strategically located.
They may be talking about in the afternoon, we did the afternoon cafe for the students out in strategically located places for paninis and after, after school meals. That has gone on and that was very beneficial to a lot of the student that really spend a lot, large portion of their evenings here.
Well, the comment.
That's about the only thing that's been put out.
Right. The comment was not that we were selling paninis, but that it was more of the, you know, what I consider to be the garbage stuff. And I'm sorry to characterize it that way, but, you know.
The snack bar is fairly limited in what they offer. They sell hot pretzels, they have bags of things like sun chips and pretzels, they have beverages that are available there. They do sometimes have nacho chips with cheese that you can get on top of them. And that's about it. It's a fairly short menu of items there, so. But I hear you, it's something that we've been talking about in terms of healthier options. I think you'll be pleased with the background of the new, the recommended food service director.
I'm delighted, that, that sounds great. Oh, and the other final thing, and I'm, I'm glad that Len is involved, is the catering option. And it's not just for the coaches. The booster clubs buy a lot of pizzas and a lot of subs after school for, you know, pre-practice, pre, pre-games, pre-meets. You know, we're paying subway or, or whatever.
We get it for lunches as well, so.
Yeah, we would love to pay the district.
And we're probably going to have to start addressing that. Outside vendors are not allowed on school property or their vending is not allowed in school property until the last lunch period is commenced.
No, this is after school.
And, well, we're seeing some of that trend.
Yeah.
And that's going to be a cultural shift here. But for food service, they also need that entity so that they are the sole provider up to a certain point. But I think you can find a happy medium, especially in the after hours, catering, whether it's for some of our instructional in services, whether it's for booster clubs, whether it's for team dinners and so forth, we, we might have to do some investment to get to that level. And that's one of the things we've talked about with our director candidate.
Yeah, no, that's great.
Diane?
If we can go back to that slide of the number of meals purchased. Okay. Because, you know, and I brought this up back, you know, whatever year it was that we increased the prices by a dollar because I was kind of against that. You can't convince me right now that increasing those prices, I mean, it's clear that we're not selling as many meals, that people are dropping it. I, I really have a hard time believing it's MyPlate. I think where people, like in that first year, I know with my kids, it was like, give me 20, put it on the count, give me 20, give me the count. And parents really not knowing what the cost was until all of a sudden they're like, wow, you went through all this money really quickly. And then they realized that the price had increased so much. I'm not sure, I mean, it's down like 100,000 meals is, is how I'm looking at it right now. So, my, my wonder is if the prices were actually lower, would we have more volume to subsidize that? With more volume going, we'd be more breaking even. And then students would be getting a full lunch and not a peanut butter sandwich from home with a bag of chips or cookies. You know, it's just a thought.
The hard part's going to be that if you ever lowered the prices, you're going to have to, as a board, you're going to have, I mean, I don't know any other way to say it, you're going to have to subsidize the whole program. And whatever you deduct off of any of the served lunches, most likely is going to be the amount added to that $60,000 or above that we would have to do each year.
I understand that, but if we're selling $100,000 or $100,000 more, we may make more money because, you know, it's just, you know, just with business that you would have a volume. And I don't know if you can do surveys and see why, you know, what would happen? Would people buy more if it was, you know, you know, 10 bucks a week as opposed to 15?
Over the last few months of meetings with our committee, we've talked about doing surveys with parents, we've talked about that at the board level. I don't think it's solely a reflection of the pricing. I think some of the menus that we've had in place at the elementary and the middle schools have been boring, for lack of a better word.
Lack of cluster of menus.
There has not, there's been, they're called cycle menus and they have been very repetitive. And I think we're coming up to a time when we want kids and staff to get excited about the food that we're offering. And some of the ideas that we've heard, talked about for these different types of offerings, we know that we have the potential to liven up that menu and in a really positive way. And I think when you couple those types of changes with the menu, again, it's still at, at 3.25 or 3.50, you're still getting a pretty good value for the lunch that is being provided. And I, supply and demand, I, I get it, basic financial tenant. It's possible that you might have a lowering of your revenue. I think it's something that we would have to watch very closely.
And then, I just had one more follow-up. And then I kind of agree with Joanne with the milk. So, it'd be interesting, like, I don't know if we can get a price of the milk that we pay out. I don't know if we can do that to see where the markup is because of the.
I mean, the 10, the 10 cents per milk isn't a huge revenue increase. It was like $5,000, so.
No, but if we're, I mean, if we're paying, you know, 60 cents for the milk, you know, I could see where that would be, but if we're paying a lot less.
Yeah. I, I would assume the 60,000 you're going to transfer is going to not drive a debt, we have the 60,000 in the general fund to cover that.
Yes.
I just wanted to confirm that for the public.
We're still in line with the projections for the general fund.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was stated. The other thing is, I, I don't agree with raising the price of milk. I think 50 cents is a, is a good standard price. Maybe it's just philosophical for me, it's just 50 cents makes sense for a cup of milk. In terms of the increased prices for the lunches, what I would suggest is, I, I don't, I think we can go lower than we currently are. Because I know that when those prices went up a dollar, we gave marching orders to the then superintendent and the meal program to get out of debt. And we were not, I mean, it was a different president, it was a different board, but the, the message I clearly remember was you need to become solvent. You cannot be subsidized by the taxpayers. So, I think that's, that increase was an effort to try, was a strategy. And it may or may not be working, we, I think we need a bit more time. I, I do welcome the new food service director and some new perspectives on food. The question for me is whether or not to raise meal prices beforehand, up another, a quarter, or try to recoup that money from whether it's bagel sandwiches or, or whatever. And so, if we raise them ahead of time and improve the food, or keep the prices flat and improve the food and then see if there's an increase. I, I feel like a quarter for, increase for entire meal is not, I understand for some families it will be a stretch. It's more for me, the milk, I just think we should keep that as 50. But I could go along with a quarter for a meal if it's in fact quality food, different food. With the new director coming, possibly coming in, will you be able to change menus by the fall?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I'd almost kind of agree partly with all of you. I think it'd be better to leave the prices as they are right now. The new director comes in, we have these new meals or whatever, and see how the numbers pan out because we can always increase at, you know, another time during the year if it turns out that we're really running short. And this way, maybe it would entice more students, you know, to actually participate in the program.
I would agree with that because I don't think we know what's really driving the drop in sales. So, by having the new food service director and new menus, we can then discount whether that's what's been driving the drop. And we can always revisit it during the year.
Just one other comment. I'm glad that you stated the, the need for sort of this freshening and overhaul of the food. I never reported back about my visit to all of the cafeterias that we, we had, I think it was right, right at the point where the food service director had left, or right before he had left. So, it kind of, you know, the issue kind of was, was evolving into a different issue in the search for a new food service director. But I have to say, I, my impressions of that day, I was pretty impressed at the high school by, in particular, those à la carte options. I think there was like a beef and broccoli thing that looked really good, you know, the sub looked really good, you know, there were, there were options, I thought, okay, these appeal to a teenager looking for a meal. I would actually eat these things, like, they look pretty good. I thought, quite honestly, the middle school and the elementary school, it looked like the same meal I had 30 years ago in my elementary school. In fact, it looked like the same dried up old fruit cup. I was totally underwhelmed and, you know, I haven't, with the food service new director coming on, great opportunity. I'm glad your, your marching orders are going to be, listen, freshen this, this whole thing up. I also think, and I brought this up during the tour, I think we could do a better job in the food service program in just presentation. Sometimes presentation will get you a lot farther than you think with the same food on the plate. You know, we all are masters of this in the preparation of the food for our own children and our families' preparation. It doesn't have to involve cost. Sometimes it's just a little creativity and a little, you know, a little bit of orchestration.
And we eat with our eyes, as we've heard from.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm excited about this opportunity that we have in front of us because I was pretty over, underwhelmed with the middle school and the elementary school.
I have two, two quick comments. I think it's a very generous estimate that you're going to go up $47,500 next year in lunch and breakfast meals when the trend has been down, down, down. And, you know, as an elementary school parent, they, it's like you said, they're, they're sick of it. I mean, it's the same rotation, they keep running out of food. My son has told me so many times that they've run out of things and they give him whatever it was yesterday, which he's like, it's gross then. And it's the same rotation of a couple of things. And so, pulling out is better for the kid. Because if they're getting the same choice of three vegetables that rotate on the whole thing, and my kid's not going to eat that vegetable, but if I send lunch in and he's going to eat that vegetable, it's better for me to send that in. So, you know, I think people with the elementary, I think you're still going to be in a downward trend. And even if the food service person is great and the food is great, it's going to take time to come back up and to assume when the trend has been significantly down, that in one year, not only are you going to break even, but, but profit is, I think it's just a generous estimate. I'm not an economist by any means, but it just seems off to me.
I think, I think it's a fair statement just because that was one of our questions to our directors as we were going through.
My other comment is, and I feel the same on the coffee thing, but the Times Union ran an article in that, what, life section or whatever it is today, on the amounts of different foods that people should have. And they use the Institute of Medicine and the CDC and prevention as being caffeine should be 100 milligrams per day for adolescents. And that's one cup of coffee. So, if they have coffee plus soda or sports drinks or any of these monster drinks, Red Bull, whatever it is, they're far, far exceeding 100 milligrams per day. So, there are guidelines on that. And a cup of coffee can be almost one and a half times that already. So, there are guidelines and we should be looking at that. That's my two cents.
And I would agree with Dr. Navarro too. I mean, the elementary too is, the enrollment's going down, so that's counterintuitive to, and middle school too, right, to think we're going to see some huge projections. I hope we do. I hope with a, a new food service director that there'll be some varieties and whatnot. My concern too, though, I thought part of being able to, to modify the meals was that we do order so far in advance through the, the US government, six months out of whatnot. So, haven't we kind of already planned some of the meals for next year?
You get the.
You get the ingredients way far in advance, but as you know, there are many different ways that you can prepare certain items. So, I mean, chicken, you can have, I don't, I'm not a cook, but I mean, there's at least 20 different ways you could cook chicken up. So you can get variety, even though you're still dealing with your commodity. So, again, with the right background and the knowledge of foods, I mean, there's ways to present fruit and vegetables to make them appealing. Our top candidate, whom we're recommending tonight, was talking about various programs of, you know, introducing elementary school kids to spinach, and then doing presentations, you know, guest appearances in the library, reading books to get kids excited about this. And half the battle at that age, as you know, is getting them to try something new. So there is a way to make food fun and appealing. And I think you just need the right degree of inspirational leadership and knowledge, you know, from a dietitian perspective, that I think we can get there.
And I also would be in favor of not doing any price increase right now at this point.
So we're, just so that we know, because we've gotta get ready for the organization.
Be clear with the direction on the prices, I guess. Do you need the price, do you need to know what?
Well, if the board's not, that's why I'm, I'm just trying to gauge where everybody wants.
At this point, no, I think.
Weight and adjust.
Weight and adjust.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So really, the only item then that we would need your approval is to authorize that $60,000, up to $60,000 transfer to get the fund to a break even, so. And we'll hold off.
And back when you do present again to the board on any proposed increases, if you could tell us what it's cost for that meal. You know, if that meal is costing us $4 and we're only charging 3.25 versus, you know, charging $2 or something, I'd like to know what the actual cost of the meal is. Because we do know that the meal probably is costing more than what we're charging to begin with, and, and that is why we have the, the coffee shop and whatnot to subsidize it. But to have the breakdown of what those meals cost would be good.
Happy to do that.
I think we do all the garbage. Like, when kids take a piece of fruit, don't even touch it and then throw it in the garbage. It just seems like such a waste.
That's what they do.
Or do we, do we recycle that, or do we sell it to farmers or something? What can we do with the?
They do something in the middle school, because they have all those receptacles now.
I think you can, can you?
No, once a food is taken off a line, it's end product.
It doesn't come back.
Right, but they have all those, it would be interesting to find out what they do with the middle school, because they have all those recycling bins.
I mean, it would be used in composting.
Yeah, they compost it, I think, yeah.
That's part of the sorting.
Sell to a pig farm or something. Okay, are we ready? Any other questions?
No.
Okay.
Been moved and seconded.
Oh, okay, I wasn't sure if it was a part of that. All right. I have a motion. Lynn first.
Second.
Charmaine second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Now we will do any visitor that has an agenda, would like to address the board on an agenda item. Finance, it is rec.
Wait a minute, someone wants to come up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The agenda.
What? There's another spot, if it's not an, if it's a non-agenda item. I'm sorry, I should have clarified that. Okay. Item number eight, finance. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following finance action items A through C.
Someone, second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item number nine, professional personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following instructional staff action items A through H.
Someone, second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item 10, support personnel. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items A through NNN.
Move, someone move.
That, that, well, I just want to clarify, that's in a, in a change to the agenda that may have been published on the website. We have a revised agenda that goes through NNN.
Soon.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? I do want to say that item H, there is a change to that. It's the reduction of hours from 2.5 to 2.
And then, item MMMM.
Yep, and item N, item, item MMMM, number four, that person has withdrawn from that position. And then, item NNN is the appointment of a food, of the food service director, a 12-month provisional position at the high school, $65,000 annual salary, prorated to 20, to $59,250, eight hours a day, with an effective start date of August 14, 2014, and the reason is the resignation of the previous food service director. Judy or Tom, does someone want to give us any more information on that position?
Judy, go ahead and start.
Alyssa Isner is currently a food service director at an elementary school in the state of Washington, Ellensburg. She's been there for close to three years. She is a registered dietitian by profession. And her passion, which was evident by both her, her words and her examples, is providing a high-quality school lunch program. Very, very knowledgeable, very practical solutions, great experience, not only with managing the food program and making the menus exciting and offering up themed type of days for the students, but also experience with managing employees. And that's something, we're really looking for good leadership with our employees. When we brought her around for her final interview, she got to meet a number of the staff people and interact with them. And it was just very positive to see how she interacted with them and how they responded back to her. So I think she's going to be a terrific addition to the staff, and I wish she could get here before August 4th, but I look forward to introducing her to you, and I think you will be very, very pleased.
Just, just for being mindful of Charmaine's comments about the public, she also was the very widely and well-received by the group that, I forget the name of the group, the parent group that was working with you on the.
Well, we had two parent representatives who were part of the search committee.
Right, and they liked her too.
And they helped identify who the candidates were that were coming in for the first round interview, and then they participated in the first round interviews. And this was one of the top contenders, right out of the first round. And I, she did not travel here three times from the state of Washington. We Skyped her for the first two meetings, so we did an efficient hiring process.
And we did an Iron Chef's, where she had to cook.
I will say, it was, it was very well done.
It gave us a, a good opportunity to see an individual within our setting, also to work side by side with some of our cooks. And although she thought she was cooking for me, we ended up surprising her. We basically sampled the food out to the students and took their responses, which the students were very impressed with. Just with the bare minimums of what we had, what she was able to come up with, it was overwhelming that the students were very happy with the preparation.
Why didn't you tell them what it was? What you told us?
Well, we didn't know what was in the.
Tell us what it was that she served.
Yeah.
Her task was difficult, because our stores were rather depleted, because we're at the end of the year. So she took a, a whole chicken, lightly breaded main base, and she marinated it in, I believe it was honey, and again, remember, I'm not a cook, it was some spice. It was really, really good. It was kind of Mediterranean in nature. And she had some fresh roasted vegetables that she put with that as well, and then it was all wrapped in a.
And then fresh fruit was also, apples were put into it, with a cucumber-based sauce.
Wrap, and some onions, and so it was really, really good. So Dr. Douglas and I got to have a little tasting, and then we took it out to the students, so.
It sounded like she used really good ingredients and whatnot.
And they were some of our base ingredients, which really made it special.
Yeah. She was checking out the spices that her cook was using, and just was very impressed with what was available. If the spices are out, they're being used. So she passed the test with flying colors.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. Item number 11, correspondence for action. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following correspondence action items A through C.
Someone, second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. One item, I guess it probably would go under the correspondence. I know the board had received an email from Peter.
Rauch.
Rauch. About a study group that he was going to be putting together on the Common Core, and then he's.
On testing.
On testing, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We've talked about Common Core and so many other things, but on testing, and had asked the interest of the board participating in that, and I had responded to him, and then he had told me he'd be here tonight. So we'd like to have a discussion on that, if we want to formally participate, or if just members would participate on their own as community members or parents.
It's not a formal school.
It does, I mean, I don't know the full, I don't know by the full discussions of the course. I know Peter held a study group on some of the books with Glennon PTA. The board has a difficult position, because you're charged to uphold the regulations of state education. So it doesn't mean that you, as individuals, couldn't go out and learn as a parent, but as a board, collectively, you would have to sit. And we do not necessarily do that for any individual group, so you have to be very careful. I mean, I know that we've heard very nice things about some of the study group from this past year, and, you know, that, that's the board side of it.
So if anybody's interested in participating.
Just reach out to Peter, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would say, you know, I hate to overcommit myself, so I'm not going to, but I'm glad you sent the email, and I would love to be kind of looped in just to read the books, and, you know, maybe if I could show up at something when it works in my calendar, you know, I'd love to do that. I mean, it's definitely a topic that I'd love to learn about, so I appreciate, I looked at the books a little bit, and I appreciated that there were some different opinions, and I thought that was good.
And what I would suggest, if, Peter, if you can send me the information, I'll try to disseminate it as possible to the board. That's no problem. Light reading is always wonderful.
Didn't look very light.
No. It's probably better than some of the things we do get from state ed, so.
But thank you for the invite, but officially, we won't be part, I mean, members would participate on their own. Thank you. Now, at this time, we recognize any visitor has, would like to address on, address the board on any non-agenda item. And if you could come up and state your name, because we are being videotaped.
You can pick that up if you want.
What are you asking?
It will be in just a second.
Are you all set?
Sure enough. Is there, is there, is there?
Is it on? Can you put it on?
Is there a button?
Nick? Unless we grab the one over there, maybe.
My name is Alison Beletti. I have twin boys who are with me, who are in the ninth grade here at Bethlehem. They have been taking Chinese since it was first started to be offered. They're both also in orchestra since the beginning. The Spectrum concert was amazing, and it has just been brought to my attention with the schedules for next year coming to, you know, that students have to start choosing. Chinese II, Chinese III, and orchestra have all been scheduled for the same time period, for first period. And I know that we're in the process of looking for a full-time Chinese teacher, if that is an option. We're looking at the online learning option. I just don't want it to go unnoticed and unmentioned, that it's, it doesn't necessarily affect a large amount of students, but there are students who have started this Chinese process who really should be given the opportunity to finish it. And I, you know, talked to Mr. Landry, and I talked to Dr. Bell today, and their guidance counselor, and I understand the quandary that we're all in with this, but I don't know where we are in the process of trying to hire somebody. And then if we do hire somebody, is it still going to be that orchestra, Chinese II, Chinese III are all gonna be given the same time, and that the students have to make a choice of learning their language and finishing up to get their regions in their language and being able to perform in something like Spectrum? So I just don't want to have that go unnoticed and on set again. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. And I'm sure the administration will look into it.
I know it's not on the schedule, but especially because it's Kate's last meeting. Is there any update on the Chinese search that is able to be shared?
Oh, we have, we have been going through it, and we get to a point, and then all of a sudden, we have to take two steps back, but I'll let Joanne.
We, we, committee has done initial interviews, and then there's some teaching interviews scheduled for later this week. We do still face some challenges with certification and visa issues. One person we thought potentially was, was going to a teaching interview, backed out of that. So currently, we have two scheduled for later this week, tomorrow and Friday.
I think our initial numbers, we were at 13 total that applied. About nine of them came through NYU, but we also had how many back out, once they found out that Albany was not on a subway line from NYU. So that, that's, that's been some confused, confusing situations, where we've also had some that we had great prospects for, but then all of a sudden, they backed out. So we have a couple, but it's still going to be some hurdles to get over. And we just found out about one from another school that's dropping a program that, that we're trying to touch base with, but again, it's still a visa and certification issue.
Isn't also a problem of two, I thought of that, that we have some, we expect someone to have five preparations, and most teachers have two or three at max.
And two schools.
Five preparations and have to go between two schools, and not necessarily be available after school at one or whatever.
That's, that's.
Does that, you know, does that complicate the hiring process?
It doesn't necessarily complicate the hiring process. I think it makes the job more challenging, which is, you know, goes to the point about the conflict with orchestra, or, you know, band, or any of those singleton classes that we offer, because the teacher also has to be at the middle school to teach classes as well, so. But it doesn't necessarily impact hiring at all. I mean, it may be less attractive.
Or keeping.
Or keeping, yeah. But I would say, in, you know, most districts don't offer Chinese beginning in sixth grade. Anyone's that have it typically offer it just in high school as an elective, or maybe beginning in eighth grade. So that span of years that we have makes it a little more complicated, where most of the teachers who are in districts may be able to offer as an elective, similar to what we do with Latin, where they might have a couple of classes of Latin I, a couple of classes of Latin II. We have it beginning in sixth grade. So I'm guessing, you know, for some teachers, that could be a challenge, especially beginning teachers. And most of the people who apply and have applied in the past are right out of college, have very little teaching, if any, experience.
Anybody else, anything? Okay, next.
I do need some guidance from the board on something we mentioned in the update in regards to our athletic center that Judy was going to talk about just briefly. Since the bond, there's been a great deterioration in our athletic weight room, to the point that there's some safety and emergent needs that are there, as well as also physical use needs. We have a plan that could potentially take care of that at this point, through some savings that we've had, but it is also a plan that requires a little ingenuity because of the emergent conditions. I'll ask Judy to just quickly explain that as well.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Quickly ask a question before that. I mean, that was part of the $93 million bond issue from a couple of years ago. Now, the assumption was, you put something in that, in there, and it would be maintained. I'm trying to figure out what happened.
I mean, it gets a lot of use, and the materials covering the seat, the benches, with all of that wear and tear, I think even if it's maintained, I mean, it only lasts so long, and I think the problem has been.
I also believe there was not a maintenance contract on the major equipment at the time of the bond. So one of the things that we would want to do is, if we did the upgrade and the purchases, we definitely have to get a maintenance program going, and have two people regularly supervising, where, from what I've learned and garnered over my research into it the past couple weeks, is that there was always little turf battles of whose room it was, where we have a new AD, we have our Director of Health and Phys Ed, that one of the discussions I've had is, if we do this and the maintenance, those two individuals will be specifically responsible for the care and well-being of it, as well as the scheduling, both as an instructional space, as well as an after-school and facility space. So that, that is a concern. I mean, I believe the equipment is 10 years old from the bond, roughly, Greg?
So do we have some donated? But do we have some donated? That's, is that what happened?
Bond of a lot of Cybex equipment. There was a lot of every salvage from the old things from, a lot of the benches were sustained and they need to get restored.
And this was something that was proposed in our bond issue, but with the other needs, we sort of removed it out, to the point, I've had to make at least two emergency purchases just for barbells because I viewed them as unsafe when they toured me around the facility. That's the low side. The other side is the equipment virtually is non-functionable. We would be looking at about an equipment purchase and update purchase of about $65,000 to $75,000. That would alleviate it, but then we also have to make sure that the maintenance is part of that as well. With that, what happens is we have the savings that we were able to obtain through various purchases or savings throughout the year, that Greg has told me he feels that we could potentially do that purchase to eliminate the potential of any type of mishap happening in the future. And we would have to be clear that we're trying to avoid those type of emergent conditions. And that way, it could still be audited, but I'd rather have something that goes wrong and say, says that you shouldn't have done this in an audit versus we did it to protect the kids' instruction and the, really, the legal limits of the school district and community. So.
And the funds are available. If you look at the total budget, we're still going to be coming in well below the maximum authorized appropriations. So as you get closer to the end of the year, you're in a much better position to identify where you have under-expended in certain line items. So that is in essence, the proposal. Let's take some of the money that's available through the utility purchases and then authorize a transfer in to cover the needs that have been identified in the fitness room.
Can I ask a question? I thought maybe a meeting or two ago, we got a report of the estimated, I don't call it a surplus, but it was about $200,000. Was that, so are you using part of that 200 or are you using additional savings that Greg has been able to identify?
We're still close to that 200,000. We might even be coming in slightly lower because of that settlement of the tax or shiari that just occurred last week. But we had initially given a range of close to zero. We're still close to zero. And we do have the fund balance that we can absorb that without difficulty. So we're on track with the plans that we had earlier presented.
How would people feel about that? I mean.
Well, I have another question. If, if the, if the machines are not upgraded, is it unsafe and you would want to shut the weight room down?
One, Lynn?
In fact, if you're in mind, my discussion with Mr. Powers-
Do you want the mic?
Can you use the mic?
Just in my conversations with Mr. Powers and the coaches being in the weight room, the newer equipment, the ones that were purchased when it was redone a few years back, the Cybex machinery is in pretty good shape. That's not really what we're concerned about. The cardio equipment was part of the older equipment that was moved into that weight room. And those are anywhere between 11, 12, 14, 15 years old, some of those treadmills. That's what really needed the servicing, tightening the belts and the pulleys and all those system pieces. The other part, that was kind of a concern with the benches, with the upholstery, you know, with the possibility of having, just, just not as sanitary conditions in a fitness center with so much use. And finally, certain squat racks, which are very outdated, which requires a lot more supervision. So if, if we have that upgraded piece of machinery that's used by not only physical education, but also athletic teams, then we're going to also have better supervision across, you know, the rest of the fitness center, rather than having, you know, a concentrated adult supervisor on that one piece of machinery. So I just wanted you folks to know though, that the stuff that was the newer piece of equipment, it's in pretty good shape. That's really not our concern. It's the stuff that was transferred over to the new room.
Where, where kids can use it and then it will break while they're using it, then they have to switch to another one, it just poses a variety of risks. And one of the things that I'd say that I've heard the most is we have a department store window with our weight room.
Right.
With no real department behind it. We're going to put a department behind it and make it a useful space, both instructionally as well as physically for all of our students, athletes, as well as potentially the community, but it has to be supervised. And I've asked Mr. Keys to make sure that in the coming year that they, we start budgeting appropriately for our maintenance agreement. And then on top of it, that we have to look at how we supervise it, whether it's during the day or after school, so that we have some consistency in use. And we're working with the YMCA, possibly with some potential partnerships.
I am very happy to hear about the supervision, you know. My husband's a competitive weightlifter. We've all, we use fitness machines. And I think supervision and proper technique is the basis of any safe training in addition to equipment. And I know I've gone through the high school in the summer and seeing athletes in that place without any supervision. And young people with weights without proper form coaching and supervision is just a recipe for disaster.
Yes.
So I appreciate the efforts that you're be making and I really think that's an essential part. The student should not be in there without adult supervision at all times.
Anyone else? All right. So do I have a motion for, to authorize the transfer?
Some move.
That's a first and second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries.
Thank you. We'll get started on it because we got two weeks. But we'll try to get the best, best prices. And state contract, we'll also move forward.
All right. Future events and meetings, a couple of things that aren't on here is our, we have the moving up ceremony for the eighth grade on Thursday, the 26th at 8:45 a.m., I believe it is at, right here at the high school.
One place says 8:45, another place says 9 o'clock, so, but it's usually 8:45.
Come early, come early. It's crowded, so. The entire board is invited to that. Friday, June 27th at 6:30 p.m. is our annual commencement at the SEFQ Arena. And we congratulate our class of 2014. And then we have our organizational board meeting on Tuesday, July 1st. I just want to make note that it's Tuesday, not Wednesday, July 1st at 6:00 p.m. here at the high school, starting with an executive session and then going into regular session at 7:00. There's a meeting Wednesday, August 13th at 6:00 p.m. also, executive session. And then the first meeting of the new school year would be Tuesday, September 2nd.
How come that's on a Tuesday, September 2nd? I didn't see any-
We haven't approved that calendar yet, so.
Is it Jewish holiday around then?
I don't, I didn't see it. No.
I think what it was is we had to do that last-
Oh, September. I thought you said July.
I think it just got transferred over from last year because we had to do that. We'll correct that.
Oh, okay.
Because at the organization, we'll be bringing the calendar for approval at that point, too.
Okay.